Good evening, good evening. I'm taking opportunity, as I should, to speak up as a civic duty. My name is Kimberly Dyke-Harsley and I am proudly represented by Ward Two, Representative Dr. Sterling A. Wilder and all of you at large. Thirteenth paragraph within the city charter says, "To provide for aid and the support..." I'm sorry, I'm speaking for a group, ECCBTP. "...to provide for aid and the support or maintenance of public free schools, to appoint the school board for the city, and to designate the age of pupils to be admitted into the public schools in the grade of such schools." This is coming from Early Childcare and Education Committee, which stemmed from the now Bridges to Progress. Madam Mayor and members of City Council, thank you for your service to our city and for the opportunity you have given our group to speak as part of the public hearing on city budget. We are writing on behalf of the Early Childhood Care and Education Committee, which is an ongoing multidisciplinary committee that is part of the Lynchburg City Initiative, Bridges to Progress. Originally Poverty to Progress, our goal is to improve the quality of life for all citizens in our community by making access to quality and affordable early childhood care and preschool education to all children and their families. Quality education starting in the formative early childhood years is transformative in the path to success in elementary and secondary school, higher education, and the workforce. Our goal is universal quality pre-K for all children in the city. The data is clear. Quality pre-K prepares our children for entry into kindergarten and significantly improves their performance in elementary school and opportunity to be successful and graduate. Lynchburg, Virginia deserves an excellent public school system that is supported by the city. I just read about that. Both philosophically and financially, an excellent public school system is an economic driving force that brings vibrant businesses and young families to our city. Our teachers deserve competitive salaries, the knowledge that the city is behind them 100% and resources to bring the finest education to the children of the city. The proposed cut to real estate taxes will result in a significant drop in resources available to the city, including our schools, at a time when more resources are needed to make our teacher salaries competitive for the region and when more opportunities for quality early childhood education are needed. Please consider this and commit to investing in the future of our city, all of its citizens, including our youngest ones, who have so much potential and need your support. Thank you for your consideration. I would also like to share from my personal opinion, because I do descend from families that were here prior to Lynchburg being founded, and I would like to speak on the necessity of continuing pre-K and opening up more, not just two or three schools. And as a substitute teacher in Lynchburg City Schools, teachers don't get a break unless we're there. We can't be there if we're not making enough money. Children can't get to school if they rely on the city bus if they're not making enough money. It's not about, I mean, gas is up, everything is up. Salaries gotta go up. I have one minute left and I'm gonna use it. So, I think that was all, but yeah, consider that. I mean, I don't know, you got different opinions the way out here. I spoke for a group, I'm speaking for myself as well. Classroom management also plays a part in how excellent our schools are, so more training is needed for newer teachers or teachers that don't have that ability to manage behavior. And if that's not the issue, then something else needs to be talked about. But I do appreciate having my time and using it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, if not, are there any emails or voicemails from citizens?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I've received both from constituents. I have 32 emails to read to the record and six voicemails to play. The first one is from Walter Daniels. The city manager suggested $1.05 of our $100 real estate tax as a responsible request. It allows the city to continue to move forward both fiscally and in the services provided to the citizens. I think the council members who are supporting a tax rate below the city manager's suggestion are obligated to specify in detail the services and maintenance cuts, including fire and police, they want and what future capital projects they want shelved. Budgets are math problems and should be treated as such with an eye on the future, not the past. The next is from Margaret Ladd from Bennington Drive. It reads, "Good evening. Close your eyes for a minute. Imagine it's 1982. What did Lynchburg look like? Now, fast forward to 2023. What does the city look like now compared to 40 years ago? What do you want it to look like going forward? With that imagery in mind, and I realize that some of you were not living here then or perhaps not even born yet, I would like to voice my support for Mr. Bendah's proposed FY 2024 budget and encourage City Council to approve and fund this budget so that we may see the Lynchburg we would like to live in going forward. To this end, I feel it is important for City Council to set the real estate tax assessment at $1.05 per 100 of assessed value. Anything less will keep the City of Lynchburg's operations at the status quo or worse necessitate not meeting promises made in terms of, for instance, employee pay raises. Clearly, that is not the way in which we want our city's services, payrolls, and amenities to be maintained and grown by going in the opposite direction. To lower the rate to equalization of 92 cents per 100 assessed value or below that amount means that in order to complete CIP projects, fund city schools, build new fire stations, and staff and equip them, hire and train new police officers, and give city employees long-awaited raises would not be altogether realistic. Not adequately funding city services such as first responder services is not something I want for our city, nor do I imagine most residents who live here full-time do either. In addition, I do want the city using debt to finance the planned CIP projects. Lynchburg has done a good job of paying cash for many CIP projects. I would not like to see the city lose its great credit rating either by incurring debt. What I really fear going forward is as City Council continues to take this reduction idea further than even equalization, the city will suffer and many residents won't be pleased that council reduce the rate drastically for long when they learn of the consequences of doing so. I urge council members to approve and adopt this proposed budget and fund it appropriately." And she says she's Margaret Ladd, Lynchburg city resident and 41 years, homeowner and real estate taxpayer for 40. The next is from Laurel Foot from Lexington Drive. It reads, "As a citizen of Lynchburg, I have been reading about the proposed decreases to the real estate rate in Lynchburg with concern. On the surface, who wouldn't want to pay fewer taxes? But the devil seems to be in the details. What would this mean to our citizens? What are the benefits and what are the consequences? A short-term benefit might be an extra 300 to those who own homes appraised at $200,000 if the tax rate was reduced from 1.05 to 90 cents. This suggests to me that those who have the most to gain are homeowners with above-average means. From friends and family members, I know who live in other communities, we already pay the lowest real estate taxes per $100 value. What looks like a benefit for keeping our budget growing would result in reduction in actual goods and services since even without added projects and the increased cost of goods, services, and staff is increasing. This means that status quo is an actual reduction. Those who are in favor of reducing the real estate tax to the lower level need to be specific about what they are willing to reduce or eliminate. The need to show how this would help our citizens and not just their electability. If raises for our public safety, police, and fire departments were promised and are important, how will this be accomplished without creating additional debt to our capital improvement plan if the pays-you-go capital fund is dipped into? Where will the money come from that we need to keep our roads in good shape, pick up our trash, take care of our parks, et cetera? These are the things civilized societies value and that businesses look for before they relocate to a community. We need to consider what our values are. What are they worth to you? I value people, services, community, and quality of life. It's better for all of us as individuals to work together to improve what Lynchburg has to offer." This next one is from, I'm so sorry, Peralto. It says, "Our family currently owns townhouses, two townhouses properties in Lynchburg, 201 Capstone Drive and 203 Capstone Drive. Both properties are held in the name of our family Limited Liability Company, Stingray Realty LLC. By way of background, our children reside in both properties. They are currently students at Liberty University and attend both undergraduate and law school at Liberty. My wife Beth and I are both practicing attorneys in Buffalo, New York. We received the 2023 real estate evaluation notice and were shocked at the proposed increase in assessed valuation. Each property has proposed increase in value in excess of $51,000. This is absurd and unsustainable. Although we can agree that the real estate market has been hot over the last couple of years, COVID and inflation have greatly impacted the longevity of that fact. Further continued increases in the interest rates, which now exceed 6%, have brought the sale market to a screeching halt. In fact, we just received an offer to purchase our properties for $175,000 each from Don Deal Home buyers. Further, you should realize that the majority of townhouse properties in the cornerstone development area in which our properties are located are owned by investors and rented to students. Investors will generally only purchase properties with cash flow and a cap rate of 3% to 5%. Assuming just the fact that interest rates have doubled over the last couple of years, example, 3% to negative 6% and assessed value of $175,000, the principal and interest payments alone have increased over 300 per month. And on the homeowners association fees, current taxes and base water charges, you have monthly owner costs of approximately $1450 per month. Compare this to the average rental rate of $1,500 per month and you can see that there is no longer any, no, is any cash flow or cap rate to speak of that would incentivize an investor to purchase these properties even at the current assessed values. Therefore, an increase in assessed values by $50,000 plus would cause the housing market in this area to crash or at the very least, a significant increase in the monthly rental amounts being charged. This scenario is also true for individual owners like us. Increases in the assessment and related taxes will now lead to an increase in carrying costs for our children's living expenses in addition to those caused by inflation. This would result in a substantial number of owners having to then try to sell our properties, which would flood the market and reduce the overall resale values. You should note that as a community of mostly student renters, such as an increase in the assessment values and taxes will only make it more difficult and expensive for students and other renters to find affordable housing. This will result in an excess property vendor and reduced market values, which lead to zombie properties, builder/investor economic hardships such as credit issues, foreclosures, and bankruptcies, defaults in property taxes, and unattended to properties that will fall into despair, et cetera. The result will be a community of high demand and beauty becoming a low-demand slum. It is our belief that such a drastic increase in assessed property valuations will result in a substantial hardship to the community. This will only lead to increased inflationary pressures and economic distress to the residents in this community as well as the affected property owners." The next is from Bill Burris. It reads, "As a Realtor and business owner, I am against the extreme lowering of real estate taxes that you plan. Word on the street has it that four members of the City Council have approved a real estate tax amount before any public discussion. This looks mighty similar to how you've handled us becoming a Second Amendment city. Approve with the least amount of commentary to get the job done. As a business owner and past commercial property manager, I have to be fiscally responsible. I have served on national committees for the National Association of Real Estate when a recent committee dealt with our infrastructure, schools, bridges, water systems, and roads. Serving as past chairman of the Dunbar Middle School, I was able to see how deferred maintenance has affected our buildings. We have a history of neglect in passing the buck. Our history with a higher budget shows we do not maintain our city. How do you plan on maintaining our infrastructure and hire good teachers, police officers, firemen? If you have some secret industry coming here that will increase our tax base by the millions, then I'll eat my words. Please consider the big picture for us and our children. I have seen $15 in roof repairs lead to $1,000 in structure repairs." This next is from William Cook. It reads, "My name is William Cook and I'm emailing you regarding Lynchburg's fiscal year 2024 budget discussions. I'm a lifelong resident, local business owner, property owner, and member of the LRBA board. Please share this email with City Council and City Management as I'll be unable to attend the next public work session meeting. As I've been following the 2024 budget development, I have most recently reviewed the budget performance expectation of the city manager of Lynchburg dated March 21, 2023 in a memo titled, 'Responses to Budget Questions' dated March 30, 2023. While I applaud City Council's focus on fiscal responsibility and see value in challenging the budget, I believe that lowering the real estate property tax from $111 to 89 cents is going to negatively impact the city's ability to adequately fund our city immediately in the long term. A 19.8% real estate cost reduction is not in the best interest for our city. Here are my reasons why. Number one, our real estate property tax rates are not a problem in the city of Lynchburg. We pay an extremely fair real estate tax for the services we receive. What we offer our residents is very different than what the surrounding counties offer. The city needs to focus on providing a wider range of services to residents looking for the convenience of living in a city. The cost of services is going up, which means the city's expenses are going to rise. As is expected in any business, we must be preparing for this and focus on long-term sustainability. Immediate and drastic tax revenue reductions do not allow the city to do this. Number two, the real estate tax rate cut reduction does not help those in need of the most assistance in our city. It will mostly benefit real estate investors, corporations, and high-value property owners. While the tax rate reduction is substantial to city revenues, it will not change the quality of life for those that will benefit the most. The personal property and B-Pole tax cuts that council has proposed are much more in line with helping the right people in the right way. Number three, equalizing real estate property tax revenues, the focus of many localities with the increase in property values. The best approach is to take a conservative approach to any real estate tax reduction, knowing that a real estate value correction is coming while cost inflation continues. We've seen unprecedented real estate value increases in the city, but that will change and correct itself. This downturn in the real estate tax rate reduction will leave our city unable to fund essential programs. If equalizing is the intent of the City Council, it should be considered a much lower rate reduction than 19.8%. I would suggest nothing greater than a 5% reduction to protect against a real estate value correction and better enable the city to fund programs and balance the budget in the long term. Number four, as a real estate owner and investor in the city, the businesses I have ownership in pay over $100,000 in real estate property taxes currently. I stand to personally benefit substantially from this tax rate reduction. However, I would much rather see the $20,000 in tax savings paid for improvements in staffing to the public schools and public safety departments rather than return to me personally or my businesses. Why do I feel this way? It's because these departments were understaffed and did not have the resources and facilities to succeed before the pandemic. Post-pandemic, these departments are facing the greatest challenges and are even further behind because they were inadequately funded prior to. These challenges are not unique to our city. However, we must outperform our neighbor and sister cities in addressing these challenges if we want to continue to improve our national standing as one of the greatest cities to live in. How our city performs in... Next, is that our time? Okay. Okay. The next is from Kevin Hooper. He is a resident in Lynchburg and he says, "My friend and business partner, William Cook, recently sent the email below about lowering real estate property taxes and I wanted you to know that I second all the points William has outlined below. Let's take the money raised by taxes and put it to use the right people and keep our city financially strong." The next is from Rick Comar. It reads, "April 4th, you have an important meeting to discuss and set what the new real estate rate will be for homeowners. You have the inevitable task of trying to make taxpayers as myself happy. We all know that property values have greatly increased in the last few years. I'm a mortgage broker with Select Bank and have been doing mortgage loans for over 24 years. I have firsthand experience of that real estate market has been doing. I also have no party affiliation. I'm an independent voter and approach this topic with what I think is pretty unbiased viewpoint. With what our community and the nation has been through and still going through these last few years with COVID, food prices, gas prices, our 401Ks, now is not the time to try and pick up extra tax dollars by lowering the tax rate to equal what will be the new home values. We are already grossly overtaxed in this country. I'm still surprised that people don't realize how badly they are taxed. Here's an example of just the taxes we pay. I'm sure I am missing some as well. Federal income tax, state income tax, Social Security and Medicaid, Medicare tax. Just these first four taxes essentially take 30% from our paychecks right off the top. Federal tax on gasoline is 18.40 per gallon. State tax on gasoline is 11.01 per gallon. Sales tax of 5.30 on most items we buy. A meals and lodging tax if we eat out or stay at a hotel. This one doesn't bother me too much since it is my choice to eat out. Water tax, our monthly water bill has a monthly charge of $7.69. A city representative explained to me that this is a fee, not a tax. If I don't have a choice in paying it without my water being turned off, it is a tax no matter what you call it. There's a tax on natural gas, tax on our electric bill, tax on our cellphone, tax on our cable satellite service, tax on our internet service, personal property tax, and of course, the real estate tax that many taxpayers already thought was too high. Again, I'm sure I'm missing other taxes that are hidden in various bills we pay each month, but you get the point. If you ever want or need someone's opinion with years of experience in mortgage lending or real estate, I'm always available and welcome the opportunity to discuss." The next is from Joan McCaffey. It reads, "As senior citizens on a fixed income, my husband and I are very concerned about the recent appraisal of our small two-bedroom home. At the current tax rate, our taxes would increase by 700. We understand that Lynchburg has a surplus of funds. We want to request that the tax rate be reduced to 85 cents to bring tax relief to us and all residents of Lynchburg. Thank you for consideration." Okay, number 10. This is Esther Brison. It reads, "I realize there is a meeting coming up regarding this issue and I just want to say that I feel and have heard that we in Lynchburg are one of the highest taxed counties. I'd like to enter my vote on implementing a refund to the homeowners for some of the high taxes that are not needed in the city. Thank you." The next is from Margie Murphy from Boston Avenue. It reads, "My comment is addressing the new real estate assessments this year. We've received another 19.5% increase this year after just getting a big 32.5 increase in 2021. We just bought the house in 2020 at an already inflated rate. This increase makes it an over 50% increase in three years, which is outrageous. And if the tax rate does not come down considerably, we'll be taking another big hit this year. I know houses are still selling well, but how many fixed-income residents are going to be able to stay here in the city with this happening? I know my husband will be retiring this year. Our income will not be what it used to be. How many residents will start fleeing to the counties, especially when the tax rates in the neighboring counties are essentially half of what they are here? I understand that the county residents may not get quite as many services as here in the city, but the trade-off may well be worth it. Please take that into consideration as you deliberate on what to reset the tax rate for Lynchburg homeowners." The next is from Sarah Nguyen from Thornfield Drive. It reads, "I am greatly concerned about the high real estate taxes in Lynchburg City. It is not right that our City Council voted 5 to 2 against immediate tax relief. So many voted for our conservative City Council with the hope of getting tax relief. I feel betrayed, especially since we have a surplus of $43 million. Something is wrong here." Number 13 is from Crystal Villa from Sunbury Place. It reads, "I live in the city of Lynchburg and understand that the city may increase our taxes. As a conservative retired citizen, this perturbs me. I would appreciate if the city considers the fact that cost of living has gone up tremendously for the consumer and by raising taxes, they be placing an undue and added burden on us, the citizens of Lynchburg. I would appreciate it if you let the proper authorities be made aware of this. That would not be conducive to me." The next is Will Andrews. It reads, "My name is Will Andrews and I'm contacting you to comment on Lynchburg's fiscal year 2024 budget discussions. I'm a Lynchburg native, vice president of Scott Insurance, and active real estate investor developer in the area. Please share this message with City Council and management as will not be able to attend the next meeting. To be clear, I appreciate City Council's commitment to fiscal responsibility. I believe that lowering the real estate property tax from $111 to 89 will do more harm than good. I say this as someone who stands to save in excess of $20,000 per year from the proposed real estate tax cuts. Tax efficiency is a noble goal and something that we should always strive for as a community. That said, the proposed cut to property taxes disproportionately benefits citizens like myself with large real estate holdings. As such, it is clear to me that the personal property and B-Pole tax cuts proposed by council offer a far more effective mechanism for reducing the tax burden for a wide range of citizens. Moreover, it is clear to me that a correction in real estate values is already in process. This may not show up in tax assessment for a few years, however, the tax base will shrink as a result of market forces. This trend coupled with the proposed 19% reduction in the tax rate would put an onus and unnecessary strain on our city's finances. Services will suffer and I fear that a self-reinforcing downward spiral will result. Again, I am very optimistic about the future of our city and I appreciate our leader's willingness to consider and debate various strategies to ensure our continued growth and prosperity. While I believe a real estate tax cut of 5% or less is certainly reasonable, the proposed 19% will have a detrimental impact on the economic engine that we've all worked to build in Lynchburg. Thank you for considering my comments." This next is from David and Michelle Humphries. It reads, "We have been advised the City of Lynchburg is proposing a $10 million tax burden increase onto the citizens of Lynchburg. We just had a real estate tax increase and additional tax increases so soon is not a fiscally responsible way to operate the city. We are asking that such an increase be postponed for the foreseeable future and planned expenditures for public safety or other needs be funded through the city's existing general fund or the increased revenue generated by the recent real estate tax increase." Number 16 is from, I'm just getting this wrong, Sarah Shabinski. "I'm writing today to ask that you not drop the tax rate below equalization and cut the city's budget substantially. I understand that many citizens are hurting with inflation levels. However, I believe that cutting the city's budget will negatively impact the city in the long run. We need strong infrastructure and services like the library for our community. Thank you for your time and service." This next is from Rick Hughes. "I got a notice that my property tax assessment was raised 30% this year. I started thinking of the people my nonprofit Warm Street serves, people who, if they have a place to stay, is in an apartment that someone owns, someone paying real estate taxes. So when his taxes are raised, his taxes are passed on to the renters. The result is more housing anxiety and the poor who have close to no discretionary income have to find ways to cut costs even more, resulting in more dependence on city, state, and federal services. Those who feel that more money is needed for city services may think that they are helping the poor, but I must disagree. I'd rather see money in the hands of the poor than in the hands of the government entities set up to help the poor. When property taxes are raised, there is less incentive to rent, reducing the number of affordable housing. The government, which is supposed to help its more needy citizens, is actually hurting them while growing inside itself. This is just plain wrong. If Lynchburg really loves us, it will want to see its citizens keep as much of their money as they can to provide housing, food, and clothing for their families and maybe even save a little bit for the future. That is the type of thought I want my representatives on council to have. That is the type of thought I'd like to see from every member of Lynchburg City Government." This next one is from Jeff Rosner. It reads, "This hearing is not about setting the real estate tax rate. Proposals from some City Council members would roll back years of progress and severely damage Lynchburg City schools." Number 19 is from Peggy Andrews. It reads, "I'm writing regarding Lynchburg's fiscal year 2024 budget discussions. Please share my comments with the members of City Council and City Manager for the upcoming public hearing on Tuesday night, which I'm unable to attend. I'm a lifelong resident of Lynchburg and a residential property owner for the last 37 years. I am proud of the quality of life we enjoy here in Lynchburg, which is distinguished from the surrounding counties by the level of services our city offers. I'm a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools, as are our three adult children, and I feel that Lynchburg City Schools have been a feather in our cap and are in need of enhanced financial support from City Council to maintain and improve one of our strongest assets. A reduction in real estate property tax from $111 to $89 will negatively impact our ability not only to maintain the level of services, including for the city schools, that city residents have come to expect, but will also severely impede the city's ability to handle inevitable rising costs. In addition, a reduction in the real estate property tax will primarily benefit upper-income individuals and corporations with large property investments, those who are in the least need of a tax break. Our personal financial gain, while not insignificant, would not change anything about our quality of life here, but our fellow citizens must in need of assistance will see no benefit from the proposed tax reduction, yet will experience the negative impact on services along with every other citizen. While I applaud all efforts to examine carefully all proposed expenditures and to be responsible with collection and spending of our tax dollars, a reduction in the real estate property tax is not in the best interest of citizenry of Lynchburg." This next is from Michael Baumann from Plymouth Place. It reads, "As you again debate this issue of real estate taxes, I just wanted to share my thoughts as a city resident. I do not mind paying taxes or even paying a slightly increased rate. I know that paying taxes helps to keep our city operating, providing for schools, roads, parks, and a wide array of services and resources which benefit me as a city resident. I believe it is one way that a citizen I contribute to the fiscal operation of our city. Of course, there are other city residents who agree with my view and many who will disagree. For me, the payment is a part of my monthly mortgage payment, so any increase is spread across the year and has limited impact on my budget. Yes, I am fortunate to be able to easily absorb a moderate increase. Additionally, I believe that the vast majority of home real estate owners in Lynchburg can easily absorb any increase as well. Perhaps rather than lower the tax rate for all city residents, which would have significant negative impact on city revenue, there could be a process whereby citizens who can demonstrate hardship due to their tax burden could receive an exemption, reduced rate, or deferred payment. There would likely be many ways to implement this, which I realize creates opportunity for the further debate, but should be reserved only for those who could show serious significant difficulty in making increased payment, which should not happen is a lowering of tax revenue, which could have a disastrous effect on our city." Number 21 is from Gail Daly. It reads, "I have owned a home in Lynchburg for over 40 years and our children graduated from Lynchburg City Schools. I think that the budget submitted by Mr. Bendah, City Manager, for your views, an appropriate reduction in the tax rate, any lower rate below the 1.05 would be completely irresponsible. We want Lynchburg to thrive, as I know you all do. It is essential to provide appropriate funding to the school system, paying teachers and staff wages that will encourage strong, well-qualified candidates to apply and stay once hired. If we want Lynchburg to thrive, it is essential that we continue to fund economic development as well as public safety and parks. These are all things that businesses look for when they want to locate, as their employees want a safe, thriving community in which to raise their families. Once taxes are lowered, it's difficult to then raise them a few years later when there isn't enough money to sustain a thriving community. Please do not lower taxes below the 1.05 rate Mr. Bendah proposed. Thank you." One second. Number twenty-two is from Kimberly Nguyen, who I think was able to be here tonight, but I'll just read this really quickly. "I am writing to express my concerns regarding real estate taxes. It disturbs me that I'm even having to write this email. When Stephanie Reed, Marty Missions, and Larry Taylor won in November elections, slipping the city council to a Republican majority, I assumed they would all work to bring much-needed reform, dismantling decades-old Democratic policies, replacing them with those reflecting conservative values, including a much-needed reduction of real estate taxes. Repeatedly, I've heard Mayor Reed say that the people are more concerned with rising crime than with lowering real estate taxes. She could not be more out of touch with her constituents. Inflation is skyrocketing, everything is going up, food, housing, insurance, clothing, utilities, everything. If Mayor Reed thinks the people of Lynchburg don't care about the rise in real estate taxes, yet another financial burden, she's completely wrong. Higher taxes result in higher rent, everyone suffers, homeowners and renters alike. The proposed so-called rate reduction to one oh five is outrageous. With higher property assessments, this will result in an increased tax burden instead of needed relief, and with the city's surplus of more than forty million, this is completely unacceptable. Decades of Democratic control, no doubt, has resulted in overspending, well-padded pet projects, and general mismanagement of money, the hallmark of all Democratic-run cities. Mayor Reed, we the people who voted you and the other Republican city council members into office have the right to expect that you will now do your job, get creative, and start trimming the city budget. With higher property assessments, a reduction to eighty-nine cents is needed to bring any tax relief at all, and we expect that you, at the very least, if not lower. To the city council members who are fighting for as much a need a reduction, thank you. Keep up the good work." The next is from Gary Nero. It reads, "I am dismayed to hear that the new city council majority is diving headlong into a tax cut agenda. Their apparent plans to reduce property taxes will primarily benefit those residents of our city who can most afford to pay taxes. It will also inevitably result in a reduction of services to the community as a whole, but especially to those who need these services the most. It seems that our new city council leaders are rushing into a poorly thought-out tax plan simply to please and reward those who put them in office. I ask them instead to please consider the entire Lynchburg community when making this decision about taxes, as well as future decisions that affect the city and all of its residents. Thank you, Lynchburg City Council, for this opportunity to speak." Okay. Number twenty-four is from Brian Delano on Club Drive. It reads, "I can support a reduction in the real estate tax rate from the current, uh, one eleven of assessed value to one percent of assessed value. My conclusion is based upon simulations I ran of various assessment and tax scenarios based upon the immediate past four years. I believe a rate of one percent of assessed value is a reasonable compromise between affording homeowners a meaningful tax relief and maintaining a city budget that addresses current and future foreseen needs, the most important of which is public safety. I would caution you not to implement a too-large of a reduction, which while politically pleasing, may circumvent the recent progress made in need of public safety, infrastructure, and economic matters. I do encourage council to maintain competitive salaries and wages for the city and public workers. They are citizens just like the rest of us and deserve to be treated decently and fairly. I also encourage council to take into account uncertainty and future events that would impact the city negatively. Dealing with uncertainty is difficult, but will pay off if you retain a reasonable reserve for unforeseen circumstances that may develop, including economic or financial conditions, natural man-made disasters, or any other emergencies that could occur but which are difficult or impossible to predict. Thank you for your consideration." All right, number twenty-five is from Gary Taylor. It reads, "Thank you for your transparency regarding current budget process and discussions. Extremely different manner in which Bedford County and Lynchburg City have handled this process. You could not be more diametrically opposite and shows, uh, that what can happen when the process is totally politicized and is happening in Lynchburg. There is great Bedford County real estate tax article in News in Advance from March twenty-second penned by reporter Shannon Kelly that outlines the process and why Bedford is currently proposing advertising reducing rate from fifty to forty-one cents, but not to full equalization, which is thirty-eight. Because once a rate is advertised and adopted, it cannot be raised, it can only be lowered. So they have given themselves room to move lower if it can be worked out through budget process and negotiations. Supervisor is quoted as saying, 'If you go straight to equalization, only place to go is lower.' If I understand what four majority of Lynchburg City Council members are proposing in their demand letter to you, that they will be forcing a vote to adopt eighty-nine cents, uh, real estate rate at the April fourth public hearing before the budget is properly vetted and before process is complete, before the public hearing, would this not pigeonhole Lynchburg into a situation where the rate could not be raised at a later date? Couple of options or ideas you have shown what will be effect at eighty-nine and your original one oh five rate in your response. A, what would budget look like at one or ninety-five? Or B, you could split difference in middle of eighty-nine and one oh five with a ninety-seven rate? What technology would think it would relatively easy to produce these scenarios? Very concerned that these four Republicans are cutting citizens and voters out of process and making a decision for them without adequate discussion and transparency for pure personal political reasons. If the vote is forced at public hearing by four Republicans, hope they will reconsider their tacky, tax equalization demand of eighty-nine cents and go with a tax reduction of ninety-seven to one. Gives room to go lower in future, but not locked in where it can't go higher, and it would be lower than first offering of one oh five. The dangers of going straight to tax equalization are well-presented in Bedford County article. Tax equalization and tax reduction are two very different scenarios with potentially very different outcomes. Regarding upcoming public hearing scheduled for April fourth, because the tax issue is so complicated and politics are being so deceitfully played, is there any way the hearing can be moved to a bigger location at later date so all citizens can be given a chance to speak and more accurate transparent information can be given to public? Sure, this is probably city attorney question, similar to what was done for two A meeting. If you were not aware, one of the four Republican council members pushing equalization is the same council member that put copy Bedford County Personal Property Refund Check on Facebook, claiming that this is what Lynchburg should do for a real estate refund. Knowing he is illegal for real estate, and another of the four shared it. No wonder public is so confused. The misinformation and misleading information put out to the public by Vice Mayor Feraldi, Councilmember Hovellson, and Councilmember Missions is truly shameful, whether specifically put forth by them or by sharing other misinformation. Vice Mayor has had to spin, defend, and mislead regarding his tax plan from start of new council because it was never a solid plan. Remember how they attacked each other for first two and a half months specifically on tax issue at every chance and via all forms of media, and now they're on the same team? How scandalous does that appear? The brutal facts of reality are these three politicians have done serious damage to their reputations and credibility and good reason why the two incumbent Republicans are not mayor. Hope media will seize, report, and expose on how differently Bedford County and three Lynchburg Republican politicians, okay. Thank you. Number twenty-six is from Melanie Thompson. It reads, "I was a city resident from two thousand to two thousand and twenty-two. I was a city business owner from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-two and still have real estate owned in the city, uh, for the time being. I am purposefully moving my family and my business out of the city of Lynchburg after twenty-two years. State Code fifty-eight point one dash thirty-three twenty-one requires every jurisdiction in Virginia in a real estate reassessment year equalize the tax rate to one oh one percent of the prior year's real estate tax revenue or hold a public hearing on the tax rate in order to exceed the equalized rate. Twenty-twenty-three's equalized rate is ninety-two, uh, per one hundred. The city manager's proposing one oh five per one hundred. That is thirteen cents more than the equals, equalized rate. Twenty-twenty-one's equals, uh, equalized rate was one oh three over one hundred, yet council voted to keep the rate at one eleven. That was eight cents more than the equalized rate. That twenty-twenty-one vote resulted in four point eight million more in tax revenue than twenty-twenty, which is part of the forty-three million, uh, in total budget surplus for the past two years. Prior councils have been wholly remiss in their duties to keep the city in check and mindful of taxpayer dollars. The two hundred thousand in funds spent last year for council chamber technology upgrades is hopefully making those watching council meetings and hearings keenly aware how poorly prior councils have managed our taxpayer dollars. Those paying into the four point eight million in real estate revenue surplus should be the ones refunded for the council's agreement to a greedy city manager's unequalized tax rate. The four point eight million surplus would not, in the city coffers, it is not, if not for the real estate property owners, whoever paid due to the unequalized tax rate put into place by council. All efforts to refund this taxpayers who paid into the surplus should be done to the extent that they are the ones who see the benefit of today's discussions. It may be a cumbersome and somewhat costly endeavor, but the state saw it fit to cut refund checks in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three to the taxpayers who ever paid, and the city can do the same. Many city residents and businesses have either left or are leaving the city. Burgland Toyota left the city for zero business license tax Bedford County, and many of the highest business license tax service-related businesses are intentionally located in the counties for lower no-business license tax. I am in the half partially-left category. My business has already moved to a neighboring county. We have moved to a neighboring county, and we are selling our real estate soon. The Commissioner of Revenue's Office was insistent that I send back my, I've moved two thousand and twenty-three business license tax form despite verbally informing when I got the form in the mail. I didn't waste the first-class stamps, but walked it over when I was downtown for Monument Terrace Troupe Rally this past Friday. C O R, Commissioner Revenue Staff was nowhere to be found when dropping this envelope off at one thirty PM on Friday. The Commissioner Revenue himself took my envelope after a minute of no one coming to the security windows. I spoke at council in two thousand and sixteen about the business tax rates being too high and not having been adjusted since being implemented in ninety-seven when George Allen was governor. I proposed to council that they put in place tax rates akin to the IRS, fixed amounts. Okay. Number twenty-seven is from Timothy Barrett. It reads, "While we are a lower-middlecome income family who has to live on a budget, we understand the importance of our city's services. We want to live in a city with affordable taxes certainly, but one that provides adequate safety and services. We want to live in a city that is growing and improving and addresses all the factors that sustain our city. It's lashing the real estate tax rate greatly reducing our budget is the wrong thing to do, and we are strongly against it. Vicky and Timothy Barrett." The next is from David, Robert David Jones from Mormons Row. It reads, "I'm unable to attend the city council meeting tonight, and I would like for council members to hear my following statement or get a copy of this email. In two thousand and twenty-one, the area in which I live, Ward Four, was given the bulk of the property tax increase that was assessed on the people of Lynchburg. My real estate property tax has increased by sixteen point ninety-eight percent for that one year alone. In addition, the people of Lynchburg in the USA have been faced with a two-year inflation rate of approximately thirteen percent since President Biden took office, and now the members of Lynchburg City Council wants to add another financial burden upon the people of Lynchburg with the new assessment on our real estate property. My recently received real estate tax assessment for two thousand and twenty-three raised the value of my home from fifty, one fifty-seven eight hundred to one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred, an increase of twenty-one point ninety-nine percent from my previous assessment. How does the government of the city of Lynchburg expect a working member of Lynchburg to keep being hit with additional taxes like this along with the current inflation we are dealing with? How do you expect a person living on a fixed income, of which I am, to survive in this environment?" Number twenty-nine is from Randall Hurst from Madison Street. It reads, "I am strongly in favor of lowering the real property tax rate to, at a minimum, equalize the taxes collected since the new assessments have been calculated. I encourage you to pursue this as well as returning any surplus taxes collected previously. With the ongoing inflation and everyday items costing more and more, a hike in the real property taxes that I pay will be tremendous, a tremendous burden on my household budget." This next is from Randy Nelson. It reads, "My name is Randy Nelson, and I'm a resident of the city of Lynchburg and was an at-large member on Lynchburg City Council from January two thousand and ten to November two thousand and twenty-two. Four members of Lynchburg City Council recently expressed their budget performance expectations to Lynchburg City Manager regarding the city's two thousand and twenty-four general fund budget. Some of those expectations have merit. However, in my opinion, a major expectation in that document is flawed in that it ignores the usual process by which realistic budgets are developed. When private businesses calculate the appropriate price to be charged for the sale of their products or services, private businesses first calculate the actual cost to be produced and deliver those products or services. If the actual cost to produce and deliver products or services should later increase or decline, the price that private business later charges should reflect those increases or declines. In any event, the proper price to be charged for the sale of quality products and services cannot be realistically identified unless and until the actual costs associated with production and delivery, delivery are first and clearly known. In this instance, Lynchburg's real estate taxes are similar, similar to the price the city charges to produce and deliver many of its products and services. In previous years, Lynchburg set the price, i.e. tax rate, at one eleven per one hundred in real estate assessment values. In recent years, that price or tax rate exceeded the actual cost to produce and deliver those products and services. In my last two years of budgeting on the city council, I earnestly oppose that one eleven tax rate because prevailing economic conditions convinced me that it was an unduly excessive rate in relation to the actual cost of delivering quality products and services. The city's cost to produce and deliver its products and services have drastically increased since the city's two thousand and twenty-three budget was adopted. City expenses for fuels, chemicals, all levels of employee wages and benefits, equipment, machinery, and equipment maintenance have all and will continue, uh, to significantly increase above the two thousand and twenty-three budget levels, as the city seeks to revise the price it should charge the real estate tax rate to deliver its products and services in the two thousand and twenty-four budget year. It is only rational that city council examine and try to predict the actual cost of that production and delivery in two thousand and twenty-four. City council lacks a crystal ball to identify next year's actual costs. However, one of the city manager's primary jobs is to provide city council with empirically based data and estimates of those projected costs. Reasons and prudence require that city council closely examine those estimates and not rush to set a real estate tax rate until those estimates are more clearly identified and considered. This budget and performance expectations message to our city manager ignores that reasoned approach. Instead, it arbitrarily chooses to immediately set a real estate tax rate of eighty-nine cents, um, without regard at the actual cost of producing and delivering the city's products and services in two thousand and twenty-four. Such a hasty approach violates basic and accepted economic principles and rational budgeting practices. Lynchburg is fortunate to have one of the most experienced and highly qualified city managers in Virginia, Winter Bendah. Lynchburg's, uh, department heads, employees have also been recognized as among the best in America. It would be irrational for you to summarily bypass and disagree their expertise and insights as you formulate a reliable and accurate tax rate. Therefore, I respectfully urge council to not rush to set the two thousand and twenty-four real estate rate." Okay, thank you. Number thirty-one is, um, from Joe Decrion. "I'm a property owner in Lynchburg, and my assessment of two thousand and twenty-three shot up twenty-eight percent. Please lower the tax rate. Please do the right thing. Please don't ignore this issue. For the love of God, please don't vote to lower it by only a few percentage points so that you can claim to be the hero as if you took some bold action, action. Lowering it to eighty-nine cents per hundred still enables the city's general fund to grow by five point five percent." And number thirty-two is from Roland Atchow. It reads, "I'm a property owner in Lynchburg, and my assessments for all my properties went up significantly in two thousand and twenty-three. Please lower the tax rate and do the right thing. Lowering it to eighty-nine cents per hundreds to allow the city's general fund to grow by five point five percent. Don't ignore this issue as increased taxes affects not only landlords but tenants and escalates this inflation crisis we are currently in. Thank you for consideration." And for our first voicemail I have is from Andrew Glover from the Conservative Parents of Lynchburg. I'll play it now.
Good evening, Lynchburg City Council. My name is Andrew Glover, and I am a resident of Ward Four. I sincerely wish that I could have been with you this evening. However, with the shifting start time to the public hearing, I was unable to make the meeting. As such, I would like to share the following remarks regarding the Lynchburg City budget and the establishment of its associated real estate tax rate. Now, I suspect that many of these remarks will mirror others that you have already heard tonight, and I urge you to listen to them and respond to them rather than write them off as too difficult to achieve. At the heart of my remarks are a foundational and constitutional belief in the power that we, the people, have given you, our elected leaders. You do not answer to city staff, and just as importantly, our city tax do not serve to employ the city staff for the simple sake of ensuring those staff members have a reliable job. Instead, our tax money has been entrusted to you to carry out specific activities necessary for the safety and security of our community. Our taxes are not to pay for diversity and equity inclusion officers. They're not to pay for fancier garbage cans or plush courthouse benches. They're not to pay for sidewalks to nowhere, and they're not for constructing art installations. Now, are some of those items nice to have? Absolutely, they are. However, many of those items should be paid for out of our excess and not out of an operational budget. It's an excess that our community currently does not have. Lynchburg, like the rest of the country, is facing an unprecedented inflation, supply chain disruptions, and a likely recession. Now is not the time to be spending in excess. Now is the time to tighten the city purse and give our residents much-needed economic relief. To this end, I have a few suggestions on where to look for, uh, for, where to look for expense savings and more appropriate revenue sources. First, I encourage you to look towards the Capital Improvement Fund, the CIP. Have city staff provide a ranking for each project based on its necessity, and then you all decide which ones to toss and which ones to keep. As a starter, I've identified twenty-two projects in the CIP that have already been identified as, quote, 'not providing essential services.' Those twenty-two projects total three point three million dollars, three point three million dollars in just two thousand and twenty-four and twenty-six point nine million[1755.12] dollars in just 2024 and twenty-six point nine million dollars over the next five years. I repeat, these projects are not bad ideas, simply the wrong time to be doing them. Secondly, I encourage you to look towards reducing operational expenses by selling off unused or unneeded real estate and capital equipment assets. These assets continue to cost them money in maintenance while providing no services to the city. Get rid of them and put that funding to better use. A good place to start is by pressuring Lynchburg City Schools to commit to an actual timeline for long-needed school consolidation so that we don't continue to have, have to maintain failing buildings. For instance, why replace a roof if you're planning to shut the building down already? Additionally, the sales of these assets can be used to fund improvements for the remaining assets. Lynchburg City is a government entity and not a real estate portfolio manager. If the asset is not serving an active purpose in governance, get rid of it. Third, consider looking towards revenue streams that leverage usage fees rather than personal property. Local meals, lodging tax, tobacco tax, and amusement taxes are all great examples of taxes that can be levied, levied against households' discretionary funding rather than their fixed costs of living. Additionally, these funding sources can increase revenues from city visitors rather than exclusively, exclusively raising them for our residents. In 2022, Lynchburg spoke loudly and clearly at the ballot box. Six months later, it's time for that reform to start, and it's time to start low-rise taxes. Stop making excuses and start making this happen."
The next is from citizen Jeffrey Kirschner.
Hello, I'm calling for comment on the April fourth public hearing, agenda item number one. My name is Jeffrey Kirschner from the city of Lynchburg, zip code two four five zero three. Council members, to begin, thank you for your service. I deeply appreciate your care and dedication to our community. I respect differing opinions around taxation. As the city budget process proceeds and the recommendation to lower the real estate tax rate eighty-nine cents for a hundred dollars of assessed value, which will cause a sixteen point five million dollar cut to the annual city budget, is concerning. I want to raise this concern about how much this is progress the city has made in the last decade. I'm not callous to the pressures many feel around inflation and the increased assessed value of our homes. Some of these changes are bigger than our city, and as a community, we want to stand together to face them. I'm not requesting that no actions are taken to address the pressures of the moment, but I do ask for a measured compromise. I grew up in Amherst County. I left our region in nineteen ninety-six, and I had no intention of returning, but this changed when I began to spend my summers in the area, starting in two thousand eight. I began to notice major improvements to Lynchburg due to the investment, urban planning, and growth provided by our local government and supported by area corporations and educational institutions. I moved here in two thousand twelve because it was becoming an attractive city. I want to live in a city, and I'm willing to pay my taxes for the benefits of a city. I love living close to work, access to trails and parks, a walkable downtown with restaurants and culture, strong public safety, living close to the hospital, and most importantly, I love my son going to school in a multicultural community. I know I'm not alone. In discussions with my peers, we fear that reduced, that reduced city investment will impact talent attraction and retention to our seven hills. If we cut our city budget as drastically as proposed, the departure of a lot of talent would not create an exodus to our surrounding counties, but to other mid-sized cities that invest in their urban infrastructure. I would love to see our city council consider a measured compromise at this difficult moment. I don't want to see my talented peers depart. I want to live in a city, and that, that invests in its future, and that has a cost along with the rewards. Thank you so much for your time, and again, thank you for your service."
Number three out of six is from Margaret May.
This call is with regard to the council meeting on April the fourth. My name is Margaret May. My address is one four three five Edley Place, Lynchburg, Virginia, and I wish to protest the new assessment on my home. I don't know what other information you may need, but I have one of the smallest, if not smallest, houses on the street. I moved here because it's a tiny little two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath house, and if you could sell my house for the money that is now assessed, I would probably gladly allow you to do that. I'm only joking. But anyway, I wish to be considered. I don't know how to apply all of this information and what else you may need. Please forgive me for the rambling. If you have any questions, please call me at four three four eight four six one five six one. Thank you.
Okay. The next is from Michael and Susan Morcom.
This is Michael and Susan Moricon. We live at twenty-two fourteen Bridgewood Drive in Lynchburg, Virginia. We are calling about the, I'm not sure what the agenda item is, but we're calling about the raising of the taxes for the meeting that is going to be on April fourth. It, our, our assessment's gone up at least fifty thousand dollars or more, and it's, you know, people are on social security, and the taxes are already over two thousand a month, or a year, excuse me, and so we're just hoping that they won't maybe, maybe even lower the tax rate. But it's definitely, you know, in this economy for people, it's going to be difficult for, to raise the taxes, real estate taxes. So I hope you'll bring it down. Thank you.
Number five of six is from Patricia Richardson.
Hello, this is Patricia Richardson. I'm at one thirty-two Primrose Lane. I got my real estate valuation notice. I do not have the agenda number, but the meeting, from what I read on a post in, at the Nextdoor website, was April fourth regarding assessments, I believe. Anyway, my property was raised up from one fifteen seven to one sixty-three seven. That's a forty-eight thousand dollar, I believe my math is correct, forty-eight thousand, almost fifty thousand dollar increase since last year. There was a sale on my street of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That property also has a two-car detached garage plus a workshop. I don't have anything near that, and I think this is way too high. I think that a reasonable assessment from the one fifteen, probably maybe one thirty-five to one forty, but the one sixty-three five is not in line with the property on this street. So I would appreciate this having, you know, being able to have some input to the meeting because I will not be able to come to the meeting. But it's just in my estimation that it is much too high compared to that one house that would be pretty comparable had, were it not for the two-car garage and workshop and, and everything. So if you could please give this some consideration, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
And the last voicemail I have for you on this matter is from Samantha City.
Hi, this comment is in regards to tomorrow's public hearing regarding the proposed real estate property tax. My name is Samantha City. I live in Ward Three in the Fort Hill neighborhood. My husband and I both work full-time in education, and we have children enrolled in Lynchburg City Schools. We're essentially a middle-class family and audience that I feel the majority of council has tended to target with their messaging. Me personally, I wanted to crunch my own numbers and see how the increased evaluation would impact my family. So in two thousand twenty-two, our house was evaluated for one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Based on the tax rate of one dollar and eleven cents, we paid one thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, breaking down to about one hundred thirty-six dollars a month. Our most recent evaluation has our house at one hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Now, if we were to keep the tax rate at one eleven, then our taxes would increase to two thousand sixty-one dollars. This is an increase of four hundred twenty-four for the year or additional thirty-five for the month. Now, if council votes on Mr. Bendah's plan to reduce the tax rate to a dollar and five, then we would only pay an additional twenty-six per month. Now, lastly, if the tax rate were to reduce to eighty-eight cents, as some members of council have suggested, we would pay one thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars for the whole year, and you'd be saving a total of three dollars back in our pocket based on fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. I do appreciate that city council is looking out for families such as ours. I consider myself pretty fiscally conservative when it comes to government spending. However, after looking at the numbers, we are making a mountain out of a molehill when it comes to taxes. This is just not tax relief. Mr. Bendah has proposed a budget that broadens tax relief to citizens who are not homeowners, and this is a more wealth-balanced approach. Equalizing or reducing the tax rate even lower is short-sighted and does not consider the future of Lynchburg. If we want to protect Lynchburg's progress, then a tax reduction is not the way to go. Thank you so much.
And that's all I have for you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing on the proposed real property tax is now closed. We will be moving on to agenda, oh, yes? Councilperson?
I'll make a motion that we set the real estate tax rate at eighty-nine cents. Second.
Councilmember Helgeson, that motion's out of order at this time for the following reasons. It's not part of tonight's agenda because we are here to hear from the public only. As part of the public hearings, we also are missing one of our council members.
Madam Mayor, that is in order. The motion is in order because we just had a public hearing. We just heard from these citizens, and not only did we hear from the citizens, it's quarter to twelve. The citizens came here, some at four-thirty, some at five o'clock, and because of the events today, it got pushed out. So this motion, anytime we have a public hearing, whether it be a rezoning, whether it be any item that we advertise for, for several weeks in advance per code that says here is a public hearing, after the public hearing is closed, the matter then rests with council. And so let me just give you the six reasons why I'm voting in favor of this motion. We've heard a lot of things today.
Point of order, point of order. I believe it is out of order because it's not on the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor, and you have the ability to determine whether a motion is in order or out of order. What I would submit is certainly because it's not on the agenda, because the real estate tax is set by ordinance, there isn't even an ordinance that's before the council this evening. So what I would submit is this would not be the proper way to change the real estate tax if this is the direction city council wants to go, that there should be an ordinance before city council. So I do believe you are correct in ruling it out of order.
Right.
Make an ordinance. Not all of us have talked yet.
And two, I, I object to that, so I challenge that, that ruling. You know, obviously, anytime we're having a public hearing, there is the ability for council to actually hear from the public and make a decision and act upon that. So with that being the case, I think this motion is strictly in order. It was moved and seconded, and I challenge the ruling.
Point of order. I've still ruled it out of order, so.
So I, I suppose if it's, if it's merely being challenged, council members individually can't necessarily challenge it if it's subject to appeal, if that's what Councilmember Helgeson is, is proposing. But I would, what I would submit, council, is that assume that this wins on appeal, and you all consider the motion. What I would submit is state code and our local code require that an action like this, because it's set by ordinance, requires an amendment to that ordinance be by ordinance. So a motion, if it was adopted, would be void, in my opinion.
Point of order, question of the city attorney, except. So previously, you told us that nothing invalidates a majority action of council.
Would you say, well, what I'll say is this, that's a very broad question, and procedurally, when you're talking about an ordinance, if you're talking about a majority action by ordinance, there has to be a majority action by ordinance to change it. So the question and way you're asking it is, I suppose it's too broad to answer in specific to what the motion made was by Councilmember Helgeson.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, I don't believe there can be debate on challenging the question of the chair for a ruling. Is that correct?
That's correct, but there can be an appeal.
So for the appeal process, I do not believe there can be debate on the appeal. Is that correct?
That's right.
So we should just vote on the matter, and we, we can't go back and forth about what was said, what hasn't been said, and then we can move forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm called to vote on the appeal, then?
Yes, I would call the vote on the appeal.
If you want to appeal my ruling for it being out of order, then go ahead and vote. So we're voting, if you, if you want to appeal my decision, then you would vote yes. If you do not want to appeal my decision, then you vote no.
Motion passes. Four to.
One absent.
All right, so the motion being in order. Yep, thank you. That's correct, but what I'm, what I'm telling city council is by state code and local code, if this passes, it's not lawful. So certainly. So we're still going forward with, with the resolution and with the motion, so since I have the floor. I think what we had done is, a couple weeks ago, we had sent city staff documentation that said, prepare some things and actually begin the budget here. And so this isn't at our behest because we're not the ones who write the resolutions. I think that's the city staff. So let me just continue on rather than we get back and forth on the, the items. The reason I made this motion, there are six reasons that I'm voting in favor of this motion. First of all, we've heard lots of things, lots of great citizens that came out, some things completely accurate, some things maybe not. But let me first say that Lynchburg has lots of sources of revenue. We have taxes, fees, grants, investment income. Real estate is just one source of the revenue. The proposal that is presented with eighty-nine cents for the real estate tax rate, it doesn't crush the city like we've heard, it actually lowers the real estate tax burden on citizens an average of only three point two percent. So if we were to actually lower the rate like this proposal for eighty-nine cents and lower the business tax rates by ten percent, the city general fund, which funds all these things of government, still grows five point five percent, twelve point three million more than last year. With that twelve point three million more than last year, we recognize there's lots of growth, whether it be Airbnb fees, whether it be meals tax. I think lots of you, if you go out to eat, you recognize how expensive food is going out to eat. The city gets a tax on that. What about our car taxes, Airbnb taxes, sales fees, business license tax, tangible business property tax, lodging taxes, gas tax, et cetera? Five point five percent is a very large increase for government to grow. And this council has said that we are focusing on public safety. We're taking that twelve point three million dollar, five point five percent increase from last year and making sure several things. One, that we fund public safety because we have all campaigned on that. We understand how critical public safety is. We also say, we're not going to just throw money at things. We want to demand results. We want to improve our school system. We also, with that five point five percent increase, we can make sure other city services that the citizens are receiving operate very effectively and efficiently. So let's go to my second point, affordable housing. For years, we've heard we need more affordable housing in Lynchburg. Every time we raise taxes on the, our, our property owners, both the owners of the property and the tenants suffer. Makes housing less affordable. Every payment has their, you know, you have the principal interest, and you have your escrow, which is real estate tax. We have no control over the interest. We have no control over the principal because that's the value of the house. We do have complete control of the taxes. And every time we raise taxes on our citizens, it makes them less affordable. Third, this is a very, very reasonable proposal. A five point five increase in the spending on government is a very reasonable proposal so we can actually target and focus that spending that it's actually going to make changes. You know, we sit behind this dais. We're not special. We're elected to represent citizens. We're not up here just because we're smart, or because we're pretty, or because we're funny, or because we, whatever. If we were to change places, lots of the citizens that we heard from tonight, they'd be doing the same thing. They'd be saying, government needs to live within its means. We are up here to represent the citizens, not the bureaucracy. Think of it, too. Now, another, one other point, number five. Two years ago, I was here, several of us were here. Two years ago, we heard from the city government that said, if you don't raise taxes by four point eight million dollars, do you know what's going to happen? Oh, there'd be chaos in the streets. Oh, it's going to be terrible if we don't raise. million. Do you remember what happened? Last two years were record-setting budget surpluses. Those tax increases were unnecessary. Sixth, we've heard from it, we've heard from a lot of people that said, I'm moving to the county unless you do it. We can't keep our houses anymore. You know, some people like to scoff at the fact of somebody saving 20 bucks a month. When prices are going up as bad as they are, we have to recognize that we're in a competitive environment. Lots of businesses, lots of families, lots of citizens can easily move to the county, and they can actually pay a whole lot less. We have to be competitive. And let's say, let's keep our individuals and families and businesses here. For those six reasons, I hope you all support. I hope you all support this proposal. This is why I support lowering the real estate tax rate to eighty-nine cents, because it's actually extremely reasonable and we can still make sure that we fund public safety like we campaigned on and I've fought for, for the last 20 years, and many of you have discussed. So I hope this will pass unanimously, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. So back to what I was originally saying, is that it is still out of... No, no.
I think the second.
No, because I was cut off, so, because I actually still had the floor when he started talking. This is still out of order because according to Sections 15.2-1427D and E of the Virginia Code and Sections 2-41, comma, 2-61, and 2-63 of the City Code, indicate that city ordinances must be amended by way of an ordinance, not simply a voice vote. Given the real estate tax is set by ordinance, an ordinance reviewed or approved by the city attorney must be adopted by the city council to change the real estate tax. So if voted tonight, it would be invalid. So I would offer, or someone else could make a substitute motion, if wanted, they wanted to, asking the city manager to bring back facts and information back to the city council at another time, if they wanted to, on another night, to discuss a rate. But tonight's intention was for public hearing only, with no agenda set to do any type of vote. We've had people sitting here for seven hours, many people left earlier that didn't get a chance to speak because of a delay that was unforeseen. We have one council member who is not here to express her opinion. There was no intention for a vote, and it won't even matter tonight if you do it. So the only reason to do it tonight would be for political grandstanding. So that is the objection on the floor.
There's been a motion.
Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Mr. City Attorney, forgive me, the hour is late, and I don't mean this just directly. I mean it to offer a little bit of comedy. When did we bring you on board? I don't remember. When did we, when did Walter leave? I'm trying to remember.
He left, he left prior to July 2021. That's when I started, July 1st, 2021.
And I don't, bear with me. So when I was first brought on council, there was debate on this issue. There were grand total of seven motions related to the real estate rate, one of which was very similar at the council meeting, the public hearing, where Councilman Helgeson motioned for a dollar three, and I seconded it. That went, a debate back and forth, the motion failed at that time. A week later, or sometime later, there was a motion for it to be set at a dollar seven. That was denied, followed by a motion to make it a dollar nine. That was denied. Nowhere in there was the legal opinion of the city attorney at the time that any of those motions were out of order. Has, what has changed?
Vice Mayor Faraldi, I certainly can't speak as to, I guess, what went through Mr. Irwin's mind, or what had happened in that exact moment, or what has changed. But I can tell you, you know, I'm happy to read the relevant portions of state code or city code that speaks to it, but really, in my mind and law, when it says shall, as far as the changing of ordinances need to be done by ordinance, that, to me, that means that's what needs to be done. There's special language that needs to be included in ordinances because of our tax rate being set by ordinance. That's what's required. Deviating from that, in my opinion, would render it invalid.
So with that logic in mind, if council had acted two years ago and set the rate at a dollar three at the public hearing, that would not have been valid either?
Well, what I submit is...
With no ordinance?
What I would submit is ultimately it would have been adopted as part of the ordinance. But what I submit is that that was probably more of a position. If it would have passed, it would have ended up directing the city manager at the time to bring it back as part of the budget, and it would have been adopted as part of that ordinance.
So what I would say is that we have, we have a budget calendar set. Let's move forward with the budget calendar, and if we...
Point of order, Madam Mayor. The motion was made, and there was a duly second. Normally, the person that makes the motion is the one that speaks first. The person that makes the second speaks second. I don't think you seconded the motion, or did I get that right?
I did not, but I was in the middle of explaining my objection when you went ahead and took the floor.
I think you offered me the floor, but the second, I believe, I'm not sure. Madam Clerk, maybe you can say who made the second?
I have a second as Councilmember Taylor.
Okay. So you should...
I offered you the floor when you made your motion.
Ask if he would like to speak, since he's seconded.
Yes, I understand. But I'm also the presiding officer. I offered you the floor when you made your motion, and then you took the floor when I was offering my objection. But thank you for the reminder. Councilman Taylor, I will listen to you from your second, though. Thank you. You don't want to speak?
No.
So as I was, oh, yes, Councilman Wilder.
I make a substitute motion that we table this until our next general session, then we can have more time to discuss it. More time is, it's another day. It's 12 o'clock, you know, and we give us more time. Also, we supposedly, supposedly are Christians and all that kind of, we love Jesus and God and all that kind of stuff, and we're not considering Ms. Dolan, who was not here. I mean, she would totally object to this. I don't think we're being fair. I mean, in my years of being on the city council, this would have never, this would have never happened. And we're all the ones who love so much Almighty, and we're treating someone who's not here with disrespect because she's not here to voice her opinion, and also doing something at 12 o'clock. We've been here almost all day. That, to me, is, our heart says it's not fair. I don't know how we can do that. That's why I make this motion.
I will, I will second your motion again because this was not on the agenda for tonight. Councilwoman Faraldi, I mean Vice Mayor Faraldi.
Unless, Councilman Wilder and the mayor have no comments, I have an observation.
Go ahead.
Speaking to the substitute motion, again, looking back at history, I find it interesting that when other council members are not able to be at a meeting, previous council said, too bad, we're going to plow through if they can't be here tough. But now that Councilmember Dolan can't arrive, when she made that ruling, now we have to make an exception. I'm using history as a barometer. Speaking to the substitute motion, there's a lot of directions I could go. I was, I'm going to speak bluntly and candidly so that there's no confusion. I've said from the get-go, before, some shared it to social media, which is no problem, I'm just saying, before folks started really digging into this and saying why they like eighty-nine cents, since January, I have said, I want to go through the budget process. I want to see what the numbers look like, and I want to understand where we are. And right when I knew that those dollars, I said, eighty-nine cents is it. That's where I want to be. Others said eighty-five, others said eighty-eight, others said ninety-two. I knew, I'm going to vote for eighty-nine cents. That could be tonight, could be next week, could be the following. It's going to happen. I, that's where I'm at. There's a lot of direction, I took copious notes about tonight. 64 percent of those who contacted us tonight said they're in favor of lower tax relief or eighty-nine cents. Speaking to the substitute, if we push this back, sure, that's, that's, that's fine. I, again, I could do it tonight, I can do it later. But I wanted to cast, someone slighted us for not having a vision. I think that's a fair, fair criticism, no visionary document, if you will, but, but I think there, there was one. And it was called the ballot box. And the ballot box said, these are the things we want to accomplish. So for me, once upon a time, there was a city council that did this, and now there's a city council that's doing that. It's just that simple for me. I look at our men in blue, I look at our men in brown, I look at our men and women who daily, I'll also say blue for our firefighters and men and women doing that. I look at those folks and I say, I know for a fact we can meet the needs of those departments and what they're asking for with eighty-nine cents. Full stop. I look at the dollars, I've looked at the budget, I've looked at proposals, we can do it. I see folks shaking their heads. It's a mathematical situation when you're looking at the budget. The full facts are, there are 760-something thousand dollars in additional staff proposed in the same budget in other areas. I'm not negating the needs there, but candidly, we can shift those over, and great, we've now closed that delta even further. It's on us to make that decision on your behalf, and I believe we can do it. I've heard a lot of talk about counties versus the city. No, Lynchburg will never, nor should it ever be like Bedford County. Now, all of a sudden, my Republican friends are like, where's he going with this? And so are my Democrat friends. Lynchburg should not be like Bedford, it should not be like Campbell. Lynchburg needs to be what Lynchburg should be. It is a city, it does have different needs, but the Lynchburg I know lives by tightening their belts, figuring out what it takes to make ends meet. There's been a lot of flak on this council, I know. I'm a man of, what I believe, to be my word. I have said consistently, I want to do this the right way, I want to do it the way I've done it, true to myself, true to the way my tenure has been on, in this chair. I've said I wanted to consider tax relief through this budget and returning those surpluses back to you. I am convinced that this is the right way to go. So if we vote on it tonight, we vote on it tonight. If we vote on it next week, we vote on it next week. But I want folks to know, again, eighty-nine cents is my target, that's where I'm going. We could still make serious investments to our friends in education, we can still make serious investments into law and order for the city. I believe we can do that. That includes the sheriff's office, that includes the communist attorney's office. We can do those things, we can prioritize those things for our city, we can accomplish it. Not saying it's easy, we can do it. I don't see this as political grandstanding. I humbly submit, that is far from it. I see it as honoring what I have said from day one, public safety and attentive ear, understanding what the needs are for public safety and acting on it. It's what I've done since day one, I look forward to doing it in this budget. So I'll put it this way, I could vote with the mayor and Councilmember Wilder to entertain a substitute motion, right? Let's play the numbers out. But the three of these guys vote in opposition, that's a three-three vote, guess what, the substitute motion fails. Now we're back to square one. The question is, should we adopt serious tax relief? Our city attorney says legally that may not work. Okay, so we adopt it tonight. My understanding is, because we need to cover our butts, the city attorney's going to write us a presentation saying, we got to do it all over again. So that's how I see this playing out. We're going to have to vote on it again. I'm happy to vote on it right now, to vote on it again in the future. I hope you all followed with me with the logistics of that. So I see this substitute motion not as meaningless, but I see it as, quote, meaningless because if, even if I vote for it, it's going to fail because it's a three-three vote. So with all that in mind, sorry for going on a tangent at 12:09 a.m., that's really where I fall, and I seriously believe we can accomplish those things, and I look forward to supporting eighty-nine cents, like I said I have, while meeting those commitments.
Thank you. Councilman Missions?
I just want to kind of add a little bit, not too much to what Councilmember Helgeson and Councilmember Faraldi said, but I wouldn't do this if I didn't believe in our ability to get things done and take care of public safety, take care of our dispatchers, take care of our teachers. We can categorically fund Lynchburg City Schools, and we can put money in instruction and transportation where it's needed over other areas. There's multiple ways we can go about this, and we're going to get it done because we made that commitment to the people. That's what we campaigned on, and we can get that done. But first and foremost, and I thank all of you for sticking it out this long, we have to take care of our citizens because that is who we are here to serve, not the bureaucracy, not the government, but our citizens. And our citizens have spoken loud and clear. They're having a tough time right now. Everything's expensive, and I know it is for our, for our city employees and our education employees as well. It's tough for everybody, but we've got to take care of our citizens. They hold the power of this government. They put us here, they can take us away from here, and their priorities come first. So I want to, again, thank you guys and thank staff for being here all night. I will not be supporting the substitute motion, and I'll be supporting the rate of eighty-nine cents.
Would you want to speak?
Yes, I promise the sheriff, Bethany, the chief, public safety, and that's what we're going to do. It's money here for y'all, our schools. Lynchburg is a very prosperous city. We can, we can do things other people can't do, and we can do this. We pay our taxes, and I believe we'll have another surplus this year. We'll have money to do the things necessary. Thank you.
Councilman Helgeson?
Thank you. And I think one thing that we could do that would kind of, you know, in light of what the city attorney said, the motion is to set the rate at eighty-nine cents, we can add a sentence and instruct the city manager and city attorney to draft the appropriate paperwork. We amend, I mean, that's really what I'm saying with that. I'm not saying, hey, set the rate just to, you know, write it in the bathroom stall. I'm saying we're setting the rate by doing the appropriate paperwork, of course. So that was the implicit in the motion, and so I didn't realize I had to say it verbatim, but we'll say it again. The rate at eighty-nine, the real estate tax rate at eighty-nine cents, and instruct the city manager and the city attorney to draft any appropriate ordinance. Then we can vote on it peaceably tonight. Typically, you have several readings, and we'll vote again in the future. So I'm prepared to vote tonight while the people are here and spoke.
So a few things. One is, I'm referring to, just somebody knows what I'm holding, our Rules and Procedure, Section 1A. The purpose of our Rules and Procedure, to enable council to transact business fully, expeditiously, and efficiently, while affording every opportunity to the citizens to witness the operations of government. So tonight, you got to come to a public hearing, and we got to hear from you, which is part, well, the people that got to speak so far, and I'm sorry if you missed the cutoff for this portion, but the witnessed operations of government and, and the public hearing now is over. So what you then should be doing is witnessing the budget process. Each week, each day, you get updates on how this is supposed to happen. We have a budget calendar that you guys can watch live streaming when we do our budget conversations, so that you can witness the operation of your elected representatives watching us work out the budget process. So that is where we would be talking fully for y'all to see how we can get to the tax rate that's been proposed, where we can show you how we can get to this rate. I personally would like to be able to do that, to show that these things can actually happen. I'm not discounting that this is, that lowering the rate is a bad thing, but, but, and people have reminded me tonight repeatedly that I ran on lowering taxes, and I'm not denying that, but you also heard me say that I ran on public safety and schools, so let's not leave out the other promises that I made to our community and others up here made to our community. So... So I have to look at weighing all of those things when we're looking at this budget. The budget that our city manager set out and presented to us has a lot of really good things in it. And I'm sure that there's some things that we can all collectively discuss that we might want to adjust, as stated by several council members up here, as stated by many citizens tonight, that there might be areas that we can tighten the belt. But I do believe in honoring the opportunity for the citizens to watch us work that out. Promises have been made to the public safety representatives in this room tonight that they're going to be looked out for. However, there are documents online signed by council members up here that indicate otherwise. There have been promises made from city council members up here to people in this room that I would like to see fulfilled. And I think they are owed the right to see that a promise is not made tonight on a rate and that there aren't empty words being said. And then that delivery can't be made. Because I have to look at everybody in the eye. And yes, you're all taxpayers, but you're all citizens that I represent. And I'm not going to say to anybody in the city that one of you is more or less important than anybody else. Don't make me gout. Sorry. Now, I absolutely am thankful for everybody that voted for me. And I'm not going against what I was elected to do by you. And I have not one time said that I do not support lowering taxes. But I am going to do it the right way. I am going to do it the right way. And signing something before tonight when nobody got to, why did we even have the public hearing? If this was decided before tonight, two weeks ago, why did we come? That is not carrying out the citizens witnessing the operations of government. I'm pretty sure there are people in this room that were furious two years ago at the Second Amendment sanctuary vote or public hearing. How many hours were we here? Well, I wasn't here, but six, seven hours? I lived in Forest at the time, but I read about it. People came out passionately to speak, to support that for hours. Yeah, no, I'm not wrong. And then people got mad that, I believe, pre-written statements were pulled out and the votes did not go in the way that the people that spoke for it wanted. And that was a huge story. So all I'm asking is that tonight, we give the same considerations and that we allow for the process to be honored. It's fine. I think Vice Mayor Faraldi makes an excellent point. He has said that all along. All of us have said all along, we want lower taxes. I'm not disputing that. I'm just asking that we honor it. It doesn't need to be done tonight. It won't be valid tonight. It has to come back as an ordinance anyway. And I want to make sure that the promises made to our law enforcement community will be honored fully because I sat here when our city manager presented that original, the short version of our budget with a beautiful, much-needed public safety package that I've spent almost a year advocating for with our law enforcement community. And I have looked our sheriff in the eye and our chief in the eye and our chief of, our fire chief. And I've looked at our Commonwealth attorney. And I've gone to our courts. And I've seen the vulnerabilities in our city. And I've seen how close we are for an actual public safety disaster. And I'm telling you that if we don't fulfill everything that our city manager put on that list, that tragedy will strike. I want you to go find out the family and the friends of the 16-year-old boy that was just shot in our community. And I want you to ask his mom if she's thinking about her taxes right now. She's not because she's going to wonder till her death who shot her son. So what I'm saying is, let's get the tax rate low. Yes, because you do deserve relief, okay? I'm a taxpayer. I don't want to pay higher taxes. I am a taxpayer. I am a taxpayer. Don't you do that. I'll have you taken out. No, because it's argumentative. It's argumentative. I'm a taxpayer, and the bottom line is, I do care about everybody that came here tonight telling us they want lower taxes. We heard you loud and clear. But we cannot discount what also is important to other people. And I'm just saying that we need to consider everything out here and promises that have been made. And if we vote something through and promises aren't delivered, it affects the safety of every single person in the city. So we can vote on the substitute motion. Go ahead. And like Vice Mayor Faraldi said, if it's 3 to 3, it doesn't pass. But those are my arguments. Yes, Vice Mayor Faraldi?
I want to try to bring a cooler head to this. Y'all can go home anytime. We're going to keep talking. So just so you know. Here's my take. The document that you are referencing, Madam Mayor, I have submitted well over, I think, 15 questions, maybe more, that the city manager and his staff have done great lengths to articulate responses to that are all available to the public. To equate that to a pre-written statement about the Second Amendment two years ago and say, there's no point in holding the public hearing tonight because we've all preconceived some notion, is completely out of whack. That does not make any sense to me whatsoever. And I'm really saddened to see that that's how you would characterize it. Because what I saw it as was, what are the things in that document that would get more information out of city staff so we can get a better understanding about what the budget implications are? I'm really saddened to see that that's the direction you've gone when we have talked privately, that that is not the direction we would go. When I have talked privately with the sheriff, that that's not the direction we would go for his office. When I've talked privately with the Commonwealth attorney, that that's not the direction I want to go. So I really, I really want to say, I'm extremely disappointed that that is where the characterization goes. And then, then, to assume kicking someone out because they shake their head, that really grinds my gears more than anything else. I am sorry for how late it is. I'll stay till 5 o'clock in the morning, have in the debate, as long as we need to have it. I respectfully submit that I believe certain things and have said them all along. If folks disagree with me, hey, I'm on the ballot next year. Vote against me. I'll sleep easy tonight because I know I did what I believed was to be right. It doesn't bother me. I've said that line before a lot, too. Someone made the comment, oh, I'm aligning with these three now when they spent the last three months beating me up left and right. Yeah, because the whole notion of, I'll say it, partisan or tribal politics is deadly. If I see something I'm remotely on board with, I'm going to say, okay, let's figure out what it takes to get there. I think 89 cents is it. So I really hope we can cool down a little bit with, yes, the grandstanding. I don't see what I'm doing remotely to be that. Let's vote, sure. And if we have to direct the manager to prepare a resolution to get our ordinance to be 89 cents, yep. I'm set. We have two more public hearings to get to before we leave. So I recommend we vote.
Okay, so the substitute motion is to move, to table the discussion to the next meeting. So if you support that, go ahead and vote, please.
I'm voting no on this one.
Okay, so going back to the original motion, which is to adopt an 89-cent tax rate tonight.
And with that instruction, like I said, that we instruct the city manager and city attorney to make sure all documents are created and so there's not next week, there's, oh, we need another document. Create any resolutions or ordinance or whatever needs to be prepared. You people are the high-paid executives. We're the volunteers. We're looking out, representing the taxpayers by setting the rate. So hopefully that is done. Is there any other instruction that needs to be in that motion?
If this motion passes, certainly I'll prepare the ordinance.
Thank you so much for doing that.
I just also want to go on the record about how disappointed I was about you threatening to throw somebody out of the room. I just really didn't appreciate that.
I didn't. So just a reminder as well, so a couple of things tonight. One is, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Wilder?
I do not support the motion. First of all, Mary Jane is not here, and it's not fair. Secondly, I would never, and I'm independent. I'm not a Democrat or anything. I'm independent and a child of God, number one, more than anything else. And I uphold my standards more than some people. Excuse me, I shouldn't have said that. But anyways, forgive me for that. That was self. I apologize. I wasn't looking at you. I was looking, anyway. So we asked the, we haven't got, received information, received some information from our city manager of what the effects would be. And he had sent us some information a couple of weeks ago. He said the scenario, if we reduce the tax rate to like 90 cents or 89 cents, he said the scenario would mean that in FY 2024, the city would be unable to fund any other new initiatives, including in my budget proposal, it would need to reduce the level of services it currently provides to residents. That means no additional local funding for local Lynchburg City Schools, no salary increases for city staff employees, no compression adjustment for LFD employees, no pay progression for LPD employees, no pay increase for our 9/11 telecommunicators, no new positions added. We would also need to reduce our current service levels to residents by roughly $4 to $6 million annually. We would need to identify the services to reduce and would likely start discretionary services like libraries or parks and recreations and go from there. We would likely see increased employee turnover, especially in hard-to-fill positions, beginning to happen pretty quickly. That's why I do not support this motion. We have a city manager and a team that prepares this. Also, I have a city finance person, I'm not sure if she's here, a city finance person to help prepare the motion. She's not even, she's not even here. I think we need to get better information from our city manager, also from our city finance director, to see what the implications are so we know what we are voting on. The sea problem is, we're voting on a tax decrease. I don't care about the kids in our school. I don't care about this. I don't care about staff members getting a raise. All I want to do is give you a tax reduction so you are happy. If it's any other thought, I want to give you a tax reduction. I don't care if they have to close the library. I don't care if the parks are wrecked without funding. I don't care if this or that happens. I don't care about the schools or kids being, we talked about a kid being killed. We have kids being killed on our streets. We have talked about this. We have given a list. I looked at the other list, but the values of all the work that needs to be done in our city for construction projects. It's over like $300, $400 million. We talked about a big surplus. We got about $400 million worth of buildings that need to be fixed, of schools that need to be done. Have you all been to Sandhurst Elementary School? I know they're working on some issues and all that kind of thing, but there's so much funding need we have in our city. There's not like a big surplus, just a coffer or when the lady said, I don't know, we should hit money somewhere, whatever. There are so many needs in our city that we have to support. So it's not like money just laying around. We have been in the process of building a new police station, building a new fire station. There are so many things our city has to do. So I want to hear more from our city manager who was directing. He's saying we should not do this. I'm going with our city manager, what his recommendations are. And to me, just to overlook him and say, oh, we're going to do this anyway, to me, it's not fair to him or to our staff that have been working tirelessly trying to prepare a budget. So I apologize to our city staff because I just, I don't think it's proper. I don't think it's right. I mean, would y'all do this to your staff? I hope not. That's not right. And I apologize for that. I apologize for, I apologize because I'm a part of this group and I apologize, I don't think it's fair. I do not support this motion. I think it's more so about just saying, I'm going to give you this cut and this is my fulfilled promise. I don't care about anything else. I don't care about anything else. And I have a concern about that. I have a concern about that. I had a conversation with one of the young ladies the other day. And I told her, I said, the problem with me is, we're supposed to be children of God. And she said, she can't vote for me because I'm not a Republican. And I said, oh, my gosh. Why does it make a difference if I'm a Republican or a Democrat or independent? If I'm supposed to be, people be the children of God, that should be a higher calling. But she can't vote for me because I'm not a Republican. And would Jesus do that? He wouldn't vote for you because you're not a Democrat or Republican? I have a problem with that. I'm sorry. That's not right. So I continue to pray for our city. I continue to pray for our city. I am from Lynchburg. I've been to schools since Garland Road in Lynchburg. I appreciate my city. I'm not suing the city. I love my city. I would never do that. I love my city. And I'm standing up for my city. I have been on my life. Thank you.
Couple of things that I just observed from listening to Councilmember Wilder. One in particular, you know, it took a while to get it, but we finally got information we asked for showing the current salaries and salary increases that are proposed. Right? And, you know, the police officer three rank in that spreadsheet, if you were hired in 2010 or 2021, which is an 11-year span, everybody's brought to the same exact pay rate. That's what's proposed. That's not pay progression for our police officers. It's in there. Now, it could have been a formula error or typo. I don't know. But I know that our teachers have been fighting to fix that problem with their pay plans in Lynchburg City Schools for many years. And so there's a lot that goes into this and there's a lot of information. And I've looked into it. And it's time to sharpen the pencil. And it's time to get this right. But when you take people that have an 11-year span and you bring them all to the same pay rate, that's not valuing your veteran officers. That's not asking them to stay around. That's trying to make them all equal when they're not because experience matters. Experience matters. Just something I wanted to point out because he talked about the pay progression plan. There's no pay progression plan. And then when you've got an executive in public safety getting a 16.9% increase worth $20,000, but you have people further down the line that aren't getting anything even remotely close to even coming up to where their peers are in some cases. So I just had to point that out. There's more work to be done.
Vice Mayor Faraldi?
Councilmember Wilder, Madam Mayor, I would respond to Councilmember Wilder and say, I would agree. Those would be the ramifications if council allocated the funds as outlined by the city manager in that document. I'd, if council allocated the dollars as outlined in the document, which if you read the very same memo before that, you see how one council member, myself, says, no, I want to do this, this, and this. And then all of a sudden, boom, all the things are paid for. And yes, I had a typo. I forgot to include one thing. But the point is, it's on us to decide how we allocate those funds. So you're right. If we just take what City Hall says and go with it, wash your hands of it. That's not the kind of council member I am. Great, thank you for the information. Here's what I think we should do. Present it to you all, but it gets shot down. That's great. Or not great, as I have experienced in the last two years. I hear your concern. I hear your passion. I've commended you for your passion. Respectfully, I do disagree. I think data is easily fungible to articulate an argument on a variety of ways. I will reiterate it again. The dollars are there to do the things we need to do, to do the things we want to do. It's on us to make those decisions. And I look forward to participating with Councilmember Wilder and fighting for those items that we need to push through, particularly in the public safety realm and education realm. education realm.
So I would just say a couple of things before we call the vote. First of all, I feel Mr. Deemer earlier did mention that he wasn't looking to the city manager to do the fixing. He looked at us to do it. So we're supposed to work out how to find this money. So again, that's the budget process. So I think that's where we all collectively, all seven of us, work through talking about it and the discussion, which we're not really getting a chance to do if the decision's already been made. Secondly, I liked the, the Bible verse earlier that said, do not withhold good from those who deserve it. That's Proverbs. I love that. So again, who's deciding or who's already decided what good goes to whom? Those of you who came and spoke about tax relief, and again, I've said, tax relief is great and I, and I support that. But there's also other good that belongs to other people. And again, when we work through the budget process appropriately, we should be making sure that we're accommodating good for others as well. And I think that there is a lot of discussion to still be had that has not been done, that we owe it to the citizens to have, that we are bypassing. I also want to mention how I've been reminded several times how I'm disappointed people tonight. I'm disappointed that we are bypassing procedure and process that I've been told tonight, let's see, tonight so far before I even sat, well, by the time I sat down, I was accused of things intimidated and threatened by people on council. And I've sat here tonight and been accused by people in the audience for betraying things that I campaigned on, which I actually haven't because we haven't even worked through the budget yet where I can deliver those promises. I've said since January that I planned on doing this during the budget, which I'm still trying to get to. So that's all I'm asking is for a fair opportunity to have all seven of us participate in all of the budget meetings so that we can collectively come to an agreement and not jump the gun. With that said, I will call the vote for the motion to adopt the eighty-nine cent rate, whatever you're motioning. We now move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year 2024 Water and Sewer Volume Rates, Sewer Only Rate and Stormwater Fee, no earlier than 6:15. Well, that already happened. Maybe in the morning, actually, is probably the.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor. We're not in any legal trouble because we marketed it at 6:15 and due to unforeseen circumstances, we can't have it at 6:15?
That may be something I need to look into. Manager and I had briefly talked about that, but to be honest, I'm, I'm not sure at this time, but, but those circumstances may affect the legality of any actions because the public hearing times were changed. So, but that's something I'm going to look into and speak, speak with the city manager's
Ostensibly, wouldn't that mean the previous public hearing we spent five hours on is not also in question?
Well, potentially, yes. I mean, if, if there's an issue with it, but.
We'll just do it again tomorrow.
Sure. Look at me, Madam Mayor, please continue. Please continue.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We advertised, it's good.
Well, I think what was decided upon is even with the unforeseen circumstances, council wanted to hear from the citizens that showed up today. So even if additional public hearings needed to be done, we could address that. We do have time to do so. But a lot of people showed up and I know council wanted to give them the opportunity to be heard on these matters.
Is that good?
Yes.
Sorry, y'all. Speakers will be recognized in the order in which they signed up to speak. Do we have anyone who would like to speak for the hearing on the sewer rate?
Madam Mayor, the first speaker I have is David Cooper, which I don't think I see him in the audience anymore. Okay, I have Nate Rock followed by Joshua Pratt. Okay, Joshua Pratt.
I'm not going to speak on this tonight, let's move on.
Okay. Those are all the names that I had.
Okay, anyone else here that didn't sign up that wants to speak on any of those items, the water and sewer volume rates, sewer only rate or the stormwater fee?
Yeah, I'm Peter Sepharati, citizen of City Lynchburg. I just wonder, I would like to speak, but it's not about the rates. So I'm going to use this time to speak, but I'm just going to respond to Bible verses being flung around here and attempt to make people guilt people into changing their positions. I'd just like to point out that the Bible verses about not withholding what needs, what people need, what's justly do them, feeding the poor, clothing the naked. Jesus didn't tell people to pay more taxes to the Roman government so that people will get fed and clothed. He said, you do it. If we're going to be doing, talking about doing, using the city budget or the school budget or whatever to do social programs and charitable programs and helping people, I think it's up to us to do that on a personal basis through nonprofits where 95% of the dollar is going to go to the need rather than 42%. Using city government to meet people's needs that they can't, they're not able to meet on their own, themselves, and they do have a need, we would recognize that. But I would also recognize that trying to do those things through city government is a very, very ineffective and inefficient way to do it. And I think that there's already people out there and organizations out there engaged in that sort of things and we should support them. If you want to put some of the city budget towards doing that, let them run it through their operation because you get a lot more of the, a lot more of that effort to the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who want to speak? About the water and sewer rates, sewer rate only or stormwater fee? If not, we will move on. Are there any emails or voicemails?
There are none.
Okay, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 Water and Sewer Volume Rate, Sewer Only Rate and Stormwater Fee is now closed. Nobody? Okay.
This, I guess, just if, since you've asked, this one we will be talking about, I'm hopeful soon in our budget discussions. We heard from city staff. There are some items on there that I did mention to the city manager. There's an account fee on there and there may be some ability to actually lower the account fee because we don't want to do kind of a bait and switch. You know, I know there's a, the proposal, there's to take $10 off the, the trash fees, but then increase the water, stormwater and sewer fees $5.60. We want some, and for one year, quite frankly. So hopefully, as we unfolded our budget discussions, when we get into this, these numbers a little bit more, that we'll be able to figure out a better way to do it where we can actually maybe increase those volume rates if we were required to per EPA, but then we can lower some of those account fees that were, that we've seen. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, the Proposed Fiscal Year 2024 Operating Budget and Fiscal Year 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Program. Speakers will be recognized in the order which, which they signed up to speak.
All right, first on the list is Eugene Wingfield, representing the Lynchburg Police Foundation, followed by Bethany Harrison, representing Lynchburg Commonwealth Attorney Office, followed by Michael Fleger. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. City manager, thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. I guess I should, should say good morning. I'm Eugene Wingfield, current president of the Lynchburg Police Foundation and retired member of the Lynchburg Police Department. The Lynchburg Police Foundation has come before council for the last several years to advocate for the men and women of the police department. And I'm happy this year to be here again to support their mission. Chief Zudimer has submitted a budget proposal that continues to, that continues to move forward his long-term plans for the PD and keeps the department in a competitive position to recruit and retain the best police officers. The chief's proposal includes additional staffing to address ongoing security assessments, every change in technology, and the pending move to the new police headquarters with the addition of two new IT positions. He's also asking for administrative captain's position. This will enable the field lieutenants to spend more time in the field with those young officers that need mentoring and supervision instead of spend, those lieutenants spending time on administrative staffs. And that would, this captain could free them up from doing that. He's also proposed three new police cadets, five part-time reserve officers and a part-time CLIA position. These nine positions would have the ability to free up some certified police officers who are currently housed within the police department and will get them back out onto the street to address, hopefully to decrease in response time, addressing short-term staffing issues and giving about a citywide coverage. The proposed take-home car program for the officers who live in this city would be beneficial in many ways. Could very well be a retention tool as a result of the cost benefit to that police officer. Also, having a marked police vehicle parked in a residential neighborhood, no question could reduce crime, just the presence of the car there itself. Also be faster response times for emergency situations if those police officers have these cars and they're already equipped and they can go from their home versus having to respond to the police station. And last, the increased lifespan of a patrol car. By these take-home cars, you could, you could increase the lifespan of a car to seven, eight years or even more, whereas now the lifespan of a car is two and a half years. But it's not just the cost of the vehicle because when you take a car out of service in that two and a half years, you've got to change that car over technology-wise or another vehicle. You've got to equip it with the equipment they need and that, and that turnaround vehicle. So that, that saves money as well. The proposed citywide 5% cost of living increase is extremely important in order to just minimally keep up with inflation. I applaud this council and the past members for addressing the pay issues within the police department. But now it's crucial to not allow that important step forward to go backwards and back to what we were at. Again, the Lynchburg Police Foundation, and I know the members of the PD are very appreciative and excited for the future move to the new police headquarters. I can add, as being a police officer who came on this department in 1974, I'm excited for them because this is the first, I emphasize, the first time the city will have a real police station that's designed and equipped for police agencies' needs. We've never had that before. We've had concrete buildings with rooms in them, that's all we've ever had. All of our city departments are crucial in maintaining the quality of life here in the city, and I think we have that. I think we've had it for a long time. Police agencies across this country continue to come under attack. And I know of no other, no other job outside of our United States military that has to wear a bulletproof vest to work every single day. The citizens of Lynchburg are blessed to have a great police agency who continues to operate as a proactive agency instead of strictly reactive. And I want to thank each one of you for your willingness to take on this important task. And the Lynchburg Police Foundation thanks each of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.